Crowd that's assembled here today, Lord, they come out because they're concerned about Montgomery County and their community, and they want to make a difference, and they want to support us in making those differences. Lord, you're still in charge of everything crazy going on in this world. We still have to know that you're in charge, and we need to maybe step back sometime and ask you to be more involved, and allow you to be more involved, and keep you in our lives. Lord, just ask you today that you be with this county commission, that we make decisions that's in the best interest of the entire Montgomery County. In Jesus' name I pray, amen.
Amen.
Okay, Ms. Florence?
Good morning. First, we'll go over our visitors for today. We'll hear from Kristi Thornton, City-County EMA, Sheriff Cunningham, Grant Manager Regina Walker, Chief Revenue Clerk Allison Holland, Executive Director Phil Bryant with Community Corrections, Public Affairs Manager Hannah Hawke, and President Earlene Wright with the Greater Madison Park Neighborhood Association. Kristi?
Okay.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So our every-two-weeks COVID report, right now, we're sitting at 200, I'm sorry, 22,639 of our citizens have confirmed COVID-19. There have been 114,216 of our citizens that have been tested. 525 of our citizens are confirmed deaf due to COVID-19. From our vaccinations, we've had 86,688 people who have received at least one dose. That is 36.95% of our population. 64,453 are completely vaccinated, bringing that total to 28.46%. A total administered doses of 114, I'm sorry, 144,987 doses have been administered in Montgomery County, which is phenomenal. So everything's still going. A lot of the clinics are still trying to get people to come. We've had some vaccination clinics where three people will show up. So it's just the point where they're either just tired of hearing about it, they've been vaccinated, or they're just absolutely not going to do it. So that's kind of where we are with our COVID right now. Alabama Department of Public Health has started to scale back even their response to providing information to Monday, Wednesday, Friday. So everything is starting to do its step down as far as response and reporting. One thing we do want to get some report out on is Hurricane Elsa. I know we've all been kind of keeping eyes on that. The first spaghetti model showed it coming straight up and possibly going to affect the Alabama area. And luckily, I got back to Montgomery on Friday, and she decided to take a right turn onto Florida. So I hope y'all aren't planning any trips in the next couple of days. But we can still expect some rain and things like that. So that's kind of where we are. We will keep monitoring it and provide information if anything changes.
Kristi, on that 525 deaths, are we, were we keeping any data in terms of race and sex and gender?
They only have the state demographic-based breakdown. It does not go county to county.
But the state?
It's just state-based. They haven't broken it down county to county yet.
Locally, we wouldn't be able to talk about that?
No, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kristi.
Now, we'll go over the items to be considered during the formal session. First, we will consider an alcohol license application for a Latino festival for July 17, 2021. Consider a resolution and order to call and order a special Ad Valorem school district tax election in Pike Road School Tax District. Consider appointment of Commissioner Dan Harris to the ACCA Legislative Committee. Consider cops de-escalation grant for the sheriff's office. Consider Alabama 911 Board Grant Application. Consider County Classification and Pay Study effective October 1, 2021. Consider a resolution to elect Act 2011 676 for Tier 1 member retirement rates. Consider miscellaneous appropriations to agencies. Does anyone have anything to add? Consider miscellaneous appropriations to education. Any additions there? Consider miscellaneous appropriations from designated revenue.
Yes. $2,500 to the Triple J organization.
We given?
Yeah, we've given it out.
Any others? Consider a bid award to Eagle Group for polo shirts for the sheriff's office. Consider a bid award to furnish PPE and related supplies for the sheriff's office. Consider budget change request number one for the probate judge's office. Consider budget change request number two for the revenue commissioner's office. Consider budget change request number seven for the sheriff's office. Consider budget change request number two for the youth facility juvenile court. Consider a position fill request for a customer service clerk. Consider position fill requests for the detention facility for an administrative support associate and three corrections officer trainees. Consider position fill requests for the probate judge's office for an administrative support associate and five customer service clerks. Consider position fill requests for the sheriff's office for two deputy sheriff trainees and a part-time deputy sheriff. Consider a position fill request for the tax and audit for a revenue examiner. Consider travel training requests for community corrections, detention personnel, and the sheriff. That's all. So we'll hear from Sheriff Cunningham. He has a waived rule item for, number one, a bid award to KBG International for a mobile rock climbing wall.
Hey, good morning to everybody. I know I ain't speak to everybody. I'm speaking to you now. So good morning. Yeah, I spoke to them. Okay.
Waive rule.
Yeah, it's on the rock wall.
Why does it need to be waived rule, Sheriff?
Uh, because I'm paying for it.
That's your answer.
Oh, okay.
You want to get it as soon as possible?
Yeah. We're trying to get it for deadlines. We got all kinds of events coming up this, this summer.
So you're not, you gonna pay for it yourself? You didn't ask?
Yes, I plan on it.
We gonna respond to you?
Yeah, so that's why I decided to go ahead and move forward. But I appreciate y'all anyway.
How much did the cost?
$51,000. That's why he paying for it.
How much is it?
Uh, that's what the bid cost. It's lower than that.
I thought it was like 19 or a piece 38, 37 total?
Uh, it was like 44 or something.
That's in your budget, right? You have that?
Yeah, I got that. I got that, thank you.
You always doing good things, so we appreciate it.
All about the community.
Yes, sir. That's what I say.
Any other question? All right.
So will this be a waiver rule item?
Yeah, no objection to waiver rule.
Well, would it be, would it be appropriate if I give $10,000 out of my revenue?
That'd be most appreciative. It won't be just appropriate.
All right, yeah.
We love you. I love you, Elton.
Yeah, I love you too.
Chairman Dean, we had talked at the last meeting.
I love what you do too.
Thank you.
Chairman Dean, at the last meeting, we had talked about the possibility of maybe doing it jointly and doing half of what the sheriff was paying the other half. We had talked about that at the last meeting.
I'm surprised that nobody saying that.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm in favor of doing it jointly.
I was just, I mean, I support it.
I love you too, Dan. Oh, okay, you ain't got the money for that.
But I won't say, I won't say what I was going to say. I think that's a good idea, Doug.
That's what I'm talking about.
Can we do it out of the joint and do 20,000 out of the joint?
We can.
Is there any objection to that? Sheriff's willing to pay the rest.
Yeah, see, Isaiah got his mouth closed.
Sir, oh, my mask is coming.
Yeah, I'm trying to listen to what you're saying. I can't see, read your facial.
Well, Sheriff, you stood there long enough to get something out of the.
That's what I told you. And then I did tell you I love you. I appreciate y'all. Kids love you. Thank you.
And so that would be out of the joint to what fund?
Cheryl knows, 749. She know where to go.
Okay.
I know where to count numbers.
All right, and then you also have a professional services contract with the City of Auburn for law enforcement services at major sporting events?
Yeah, that's the same contract we do every year for the Auburn football games where we work.
Next agenda.
And a bid award to Stivers Hyundai for sheriff's office vehicles.
Yes, that's a.
Was there a third bid on that? There were only two?
Only two. We sent it out throughout the whole state, and I thought for sure we'd get tons of them. And Stivers, he got it because he owns a Hyundai dealership in South Carolina. And so he, he's bidding on everything, which is good. I'm glad to see that.
But no, this one's out of South Carolina.
Yeah, but he, he bided it out of the South Carolina office, but through his local office because of all his dealerships, Stivers.
Stivers is the largest Hyundai dealer in the United States.
I just learned that.
Okay.
Then he did donate that vehicle to Carlos Taylor, the police officer's family.
Oh, did he?
And he offered, donated the vehicle, and he offered to pay for the conversion, a total of about $67,000 that he was going to give. He ended up giving the $30,000 vehicle.
Which is good.
All right, next agenda.
Other two items from the sheriff's office are grants, the inter-local cooperation agreement with the City of Montgomery for the 2021 Edward Byrne Memorial Justice Assistance Grant.
Yes, ma'am. There's no local match, and it's an equipment grant.
Next agenda.
Sounds good to me.
So that's all?
That's it. Oh, well, we know how to find our seat.
Thank y'all.
Next, we'll hear from Allison Holland, the Revenue Commissioner's Office. Item number seven.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning.
I'm here regarding our annual report that we have to send to the state for amounts not collected for the 2020 tax year due to litigations, insolvents, lands bid in to the state, and the corresponding resolution for the county.
So is that the next agenda? Okay. Next agenda?
All right, yeah, that's fine. Thanks.
Next, we'll hear from Phil Bryant with Community Corrections regarding the annual Community Corrections Plan. And I'm happy to say that this is the first time it's been submitted electronically, and you all won't get your notebook.
And I'm pretty sure you all are disappointed in that. But hopefully, I can continue to send it to you electronically. Good morning. You know, each year, we're required to send that plan to the Department of Corrections so that we can be reimbursed for the people that we supervise. And you all are required to, or you all have to approve that plan. So I'm just asking that you all put it on the next agenda for approval.
Okay, that's fine. Next agenda. But let me ask, there was some time we were getting reports from the Community Corrections, how many people they got from DOC, from the prisons? Have we been getting inmates and stuff in prisons lately?
We have, and I wasn't aware.
We get paid for it, you know?
Right.
Community Corrections was supposed to pay for itself after so many years, and wasn't supposed to come into their higher budget.
Yes, sir, I've heard that. But now, that was before, that was before my time.
So where, I know, but where are we on that? Are we growing?
Well, right now, we aren't growing because of COVID. Once the court systems kind of shut down, then that stopped the number of people that we were actually getting into the program.
So how many people we got in Community Corrections now?
I think it's about 120.
We a long way from Mobile. Mobile got 1,000 plus. If that means more crime in Mobile than in Montgomery, we talk about a lot of crime in Montgomery.
I don't think that there's more crime in Mobile than Montgomery, but I just think that.
I'm just trying to figure out why they got 1,000 something, we got 100 or something.
Well, Chairman, I, that one I can't answer.
Okay, well, the more we get, the more money we get, though, right?
That's, that's correct.
Okay, that's what I'm looking for.
What happened to, what happened to the reports? We were getting monthly reports on the number of participants in the various programs.
I'm not aware of that.
I think it stopped when you took over.
Well, no one informed me of that, but.
Might want to look into that.
Okay. If y'all, if y'all tell me what you want in the reports and what kind of reports you want, I'll be glad to submit them to you.
You can give them a copy.
I'll get with you.
Before we had, the goal, the goal was to somehow work with DOC to try to see if we can get enough referrals so that, I don't think it's going to be possible for the program to really pay for itself. I was on that board for, for a long time, and, and we tried to do that on the best of conditions. Maybe not the best of conditions, but we tried to do it, and that's been a goal. But I don't think we've done all that we can do in terms of getting more screening better and getting more people into the, to the various, the program that pays. But I don't, I don't think that it's going to be possible for us to ever break even on this thing. We're always going to have to come out of our pocket for something. But just let, we'd like to get that report so we'll know where we are and know that that's a goal of ours. That's what we'd like to see happen, is to see that the programs are such that they're, they're paying for themselves. One of the, one of the obstacles, and, and you'll, you'll know this, I'm sure, a lot of the fee programs that we have, the judges just, if the defendants say, I can't pay the fee, the judge won't make them pay it. He'll order them into the program, and we'll have to take them into the program and keep them in the program whether they pay or not. And if you're in jail, you shouldn't have to go to jail because you're broke, you know? So I, I thoroughly understand that. So that's a part of the problem. So that's why I say this program probably never pay for itself. But the, the goal is to have it, you know, us do all we can to make sure that it's, you know, got a few more than 120 people in it.
Right. And I think we would have had more if, if it wasn't for COVID. I mean, once the, once the courthouses stopped having hearings every week, then that affected the program.
Thank you, Phil.
All right.
Next, we'll hear from Hannah Hawke.
Good morning. You have a calendar before you, and for the most part, it's got on there about the budget hearing, which we will have next commission meeting, following the next commission meeting. And then it talks about the budget review dates. And then we also have the tour of the mental health crisis diversion center, August 4th, so if you want to look through that. That's it. Thank you.
You didn't give us time to ask you no questions.
We actually skipped an item for the sheriff. Sheriff? You've got a, a budget change request for the detention facility?
Medical or the other part? Which one?
Medical.
Yeah.
Do you want to explain that?
Yeah, do they get, do they have it?
What you got?
Budget change for inmate medical. We were zero, and we got to go out the rest of this year. So we're looking at that. Me and Holly looked at the bills, and we came up with some numbers, and, and so we had to do a budget change, try to get some money.
That was like $627,000?
Yeah.
$676.
Yeah, it was six something.
Is that, is that, is that going to be? Where's, where's that coming from, Cheryl? Fund balance?
Fund balance, they don't have it under cover.
What happened? Anything, anything?
Uh, inmate medical. I mean, right now, we've been sending out inmates just about all the time on doctor's appointments and some of the meds that they're taking. You think people can't afford them at home? I mean, it's, it's really hitting us.
The state, state's employee, state.
We got 100 inmates over there that hadn't even been to trial, so.
So those are ours. I saw that. I was just wondering where the money was going to come from.
Yeah, and then also, that's something we'll get with when we start talking, looking at the, the new, next year's budget. And we're in the process of getting another medical provider in the jail. But all those costs have really went up, and it's coming back on us now.
We got to do something, something to get some, some state help.
Yeah, I've been talking to them.
I mean, you might, you might have to do some legislation, I don't know, to try to get some state help on that.
I've been working on that too.
Yeah, we're not the only county that's.
I know, and that's what.
Through the Sheriff's Association.
Yeah, and then I'm going to meet with you all on your legislative group from the ACCA, so hopefully we can.
I'll, I'll work with you on that.
Okay.
We definitely need to do that. We're not the only county that's.
Oh, no, uh-uh, everybody's hurting. And these costs are going up.
We can't, a lot of counties can't.
People don't realize that everything that, just because they think they're in jail, we still give them the best medical than anything. And people don't realize that, and they don't realize that costs a lot of money. And we're spending a lot of money. So it behooves us to start looking toward the future and, and at least trying to bring in another pharmaceutical company and things of this nature that, you know, we can buy in bulk. And that's what we're looking at, buying in bulk, not just one county, but bulk for multiple counties, and maybe we can drive those costs down, so. Holly, you want to add to that? I see you jumped up. Defending your share.
She been doing homework.
I've been doing a lot of research with, with inmate medical. We're actually meeting with two different medical groups next week, or actually, the end of this week, to look at possibly making a change to who is staffing our inmate medical. Mainly because what we're seeing is there is a 50% higher rate of inmates going out of the facility, which not only is cost there, but it's cost to employees having to go with these inmates. We've had a $33,000 so far this year security bill for security personnel to sit with these inmates while they're out. So there's a lot of extra costs that aren't even included in this amount that you're seeing. We also have seen a 64% increase in pharmaceuticals for the inmate health. One company we're looking at possibly going with has their own wholesale pharmacy included, so they would just give us a pass-through on pharmacy for whatever their cost is. So we're looking at some different things that we can do. Now, will the cost be lower? Probably not. What we've seen is, over the country, healthcare costs for inmates have gone up. From 2001, it was 4.5 billion, to 2015, it was 8 billion. So this is a nationwide crisis. It's not just here. But we're just now seeing a lot of different increases where we're having to now have to look and be a little bit more creative in how we handle this.
Do we anticipate a similar situation with the youth facility? Because I believe it's the same provider in both areas.
What we've done, this RFP that I put out, is, is a combined RFP for both. So there will be the same provider for both, and that also will help because if there's a shortage in one area, they can also fill, fill in the gaps. So they can pull staff from, from both facilities. And I hope to have more about that at the next meeting to present our recommendation for, for an inmate health company.
Thanks for what you all do, but we wouldn't wear.
Anything else?
Thank you too, Sheriff. Oh, you're welcome. Thank y'all.
Item number eight, board member appointments to the Montgomery City-County Public Library Board.
Do we have, I thought we had another one. Know somebody else who would come before us?
We, we've got one, we've got two other items to cover, and then we'll get our last visitor.
Oh, okay.
How many appointments, how many appointments we have? How many openings?
It's Betsy Akins and Janice Franklin's. Terms have expired.
They don't want to be.
Betsy does.
Betsy does, and Chairman Dean was going to look into some information about Ms. Franklin.
She don't, she don't want to be.
She not?
No, she's biding Alabama State.
I'll see if I can get somebody for, by the next meeting. I'll look into it.
Item number nine is regarding new license types that was legislation passed by the legislature this year. We need to update the, our license types and fees. So we will have that updated, that updated at the next meeting. There it is again.
You know, I, they, they present that every year, but I don't know when we've ever changed it.
This is the result of, of legislation, this change this past year. So can that be an item on the next agenda?
Oh, yes, yes.
Item number 10 is a proposed lease agreement with East Montgomery Investment Company for additional warehouse space for the probate judge's office election equipment as a result of the grant.
We'll get a next agenda.
All right.
And next, we will hear from President Earlene Wright with the Greater Madison Park Neighborhood Association.
Good morning, everybody.
Good morning.
As she said, my name is Earlene Wright. I'm with the Greater Madison Park Neighborhood Association. And I have some neighbors here with us today. If they please stand. What we're, we're here today to petition the commission to use some of the American Rescue Plan Act funds to improve the infrastructure in the Madison Park community. Now, we know that Commissioner Sankey is aware of all the infrastructure problems that we are experiencing in our community, which are the lack of a public sewer system, the lack of availability of the natural gas, substandard fire hydrants, inadequate road conditions, and broadband access. We are here today because we want to make sure that the entire county commission understands the gravity of the, of the problems that we're experiencing in our neighborhood. The three of the most important problems that we are experiencing are the public sewer system. You may or may not know that Madison Park is, sits in a low, low-lying area. Therefore, when it rains a lot, the ground is saturated with rainwater, and that rainwater flows backwards into the sewer, the septic tanks, causing them to fill up. When that happens, you can have raw sewage that will build back up in your house. It can even seep into above ground. Then you got, you can't wash your clothes, you can't use the bathroom, you can't bathe, which causes you to live in unsanitary conditions. And also, it causes a public health hazard when that raw sewage comes above ground because the rainwater will force it above ground. And there, you got a public health hazard outside in your whole neighborhood. And you can bet that if it's happening in one septic tank in that community, it's happening to all of them. So you got a community with a public health hazard of raw sewage above ground and back and back up in the homes. Okay? And you can forget about having that stuff drawn out, cleaned out, having the road reroute or somebody come out, because that rainwater will fill that septic tank up faster than they can pump it out. I know that for a fact because it happened to me. Okay? And the next thing that we want to talk about is availability for natural gas. We have people. We have people out there in our community that don't have the ability to be connected to natural gas. This may not seem like a big thing to anybody, but propane is, is, is very expensive to buy. We have elderly people in their community on fixed incomes that can't afford all that. So you know what they're going to do. They're going to do whatever means necessary to heat their homes, whether that be using an old fireplace, electric heaters, which brings up a problem of causing a fire hazard in the home. And you know, during the winter time, you have, the fire department goes out for a lot of home fires caused by electric heaters. So that brings up the problem about the fire hydrants in our neighbor, in our community. These fire hydrants are substandard. The fire department can't connect to them, and they couldn't connect to them ever since they were put out there. So therefore, they're, they're going to have to bring tanker trucks out, and hopefully your, your house hadn't burned down completely before they can get the tanker truck out there and pray that nobody gets burned up in a fire like what a child got burned up in a house fire in their neighborhood two or three years ago. So we're asking that the county commission uses some of that American Rescue Plan Funds Act to improve these infrastructures and rectify all these problems that we are having out there, and especially our sewer problem, because as you hear, that, that storm that's coming in, it's going to cause us problems out there very, very soon, and it happens. More, and anybody that has a septic tank knows about what that ground saturated rainwater does to a septic tank system. Okay? Now, we realize that you have that American Rescue Plan Act, and you have to submit a plan of, of how you're going to disperse those funds, and we are asking that the infrastructure issues that we just talked about here today are added into your plan when you submit it to the Department of Treasury. And furthermore, we want to affirm the fact that the Madison Park community has been silent for too long regarding the problems that plague our community, and we're here to let you know that we're not going to be silent anymore. We're not going to sit on the sidelines. We're going to do whatever it is possible, whatever we can do to have our voices heard and our problems corrected. Thank you.
That's right.
Yes.
Thank you for coming today. And we are, have been made aware of the problem, problems that Madison Park have with sewage and broadband. I, I wasn't familiar with the gas problem. Tell me, is, is Madison Park, does the city limit go past Madison Park?
Yes, it does.
So it's totally inside of the city?
It is.
We, we, we've, the last thing I would do is put that off on the city, although it is in the city and it's their jurisdiction. This is not a problem that, that, that's not the answer you need, not the answer you're going to get from us. We did have a meeting last week, I think it was, and, and we talked about various things that we might be able to do with these funds and jointly with the city. And this is certainly one of the things that I think that the city and the county is going to look at doing jointly. While, while you have these issues, you're not the only part of Montgomery that, that has these issues.
I'm sure we're not.
There are other portions of, that are inside of the city limits. That should be, in my mind, there should be no city resident, no part of Montgomery, city proper, that's not connected to city sewer. None, none, there shouldn't be.
It shouldn't be.
You know, uh...
Hold it tight. They didn't, they didn't... Yeah.
And, 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 and so that's something that is going to be addressed. It should have been addressed long ago.
And, and, and it was. 20 years ago, we, there was a, a thing on the table for sewer systems, and part of Madison Park got done, but like I said, we've been quiet too long, and we're not going to be quiet anymore. We're going to fight for what we believe we deserve.
Well, thank you for coming and bringing that to our, I mean, and, and expressing, you know, your position on it. This is something that this commissioner understands.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Well, the first lawsuits I filed, I think it was in 1974, against the city, the city water and sewer, because of poor conditions out in Madison Park. And my theory was then that y'all paying taxes and you were not getting any services.
Exactly.
And we won, and I don't, I'm puzzled. I guess they just brushed it under the table, but we won in circuit court that case. So the city water and sewer, I would go to them and tell them, remind them that it was an environmental health and, like, pay taxes situation.
Believe you, we will be at the city council meeting this afternoon as well with the same voice.
You need to be there.
And we're going to, like I'm saying, we're going to go as far as we need to. If we have to be out there on the picket line, we'll do that, too. We're not going to be quiet any longer. We've been dealing with this thing too long. Yes, sir.
You, all of you have been in Madison Park for a lot of years, and I, I think I know a lot of you.
Yes, you do.
I played baseball out there and everything, and I sympathize also, but I wish you wouldn't use the word "your fight." That's, because 20 years ago, when you talked about when Giles Williams was commissioner, we, I worked with him in the city council to get a start on sewer. Do you remember that?
I do.
Okay. And I've been telling our commissioners that you got to work with your city council people if it's in the city. See, a lot of us, you know, we don't have, we, we county commissioners, but the majority of the people that vote for us live in the city, so we can't tell y'all we can't do it because you vote for us.
Yes, right.
But we got to work with those city council people, the city pastor people, it's in the jurisdiction of the city council, but you got to work, that's what Giles did, and I would recommend that Mr. Sankey get with that person, too, and we going to help him do what he needs to do for Madison Park. I also got a district in my, in my district, Hunter Station, Old Selma Road, got the same problem, got the same problem. What's the name of the place out there, in your, in your district? Macedonia. Macedonia had the same thing. We had councilmen and, and commissioners working together to get sewage and stuff out there, so it can be done, but like Tommy said, the water and sewer board, they got the majority of the money, okay? So we not going to leave you out. I could sympathize with you, too, okay? I'm old enough to know what it was to use the outhouse, too. So I don't, I don't like that, so I want to make sure that y'all understand, we going to do what we need to do, but don't use the word, that's pray, that's don't fight. We ain't going to fight about it, because we can get it done.
Well, when, when I say fight, not literally fight.
I know, I know.
You know what I meant. But it is a fight when you have to come before people, and we've had commissioners before we got annexed into the city limits that did not fight or speak up for Madison Park. And what I'm saying is, we're going to, if you're not going to speak up for us, we're not going to vote for you.
Well, you got to learn to speak up for you.
And, and I've been in all, I've been in three meetings on the American Recovery Act, and the number one, I will say this, the number one priority in all three meetings has been water and sewer.
And I got, I printed that whole act. I read it myself.
Because I know I'm on a septic tank myself, but I will never, probably ever be off a septic tank, but your needs a lot were greater than mine is in the low-lying areas. But I do understand, because I have part of Macedonia, and I do have unincorporated areas that don't have fire hydrants, so I know what it's like to have to pump and rely on a volunteer fire department to pump, and because the, the water lines are only two-inch water lines, and they need six-inch water lines, so they don't have fire hydrants. So I, I can sympathize with you, but I can assure you that all three meetings I've been in with Mayor Reed on this money, the number one is you, so just for the rest of the...
Well, great, I'm glad to hear that. But, and when you were saying that about the American Rescue Fund Plan Act, on page 26802, section one, water and sewer infrastructure, you know, I've been reading this thing, too.
Number one.
All right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Because I'm, I'm the commissioner that represents the district out there in Madison Park, and first of all, I want to applaud Ms. Wright for her leadership and the rest of my constituents for coming. This is part of the discussion that the Treasury actually strongly recommends, that the constituents be engaged in the process in terms of what they think might be more important in terms of health issues and other issues to help mitigate the impact of COVID-19. So you all are doing the right thing, and I'm glad that my fellow commissioners are here to say that we certainly support you all. I've been in conversations with the mayor and Mr. Branton Alliance, you know, Mr. Branton Alliance is your county commissioner, and so, city, I'm sorry, city councilman, thank you. And so we, we've been talking, but what you all are doing is very, very important. Water and sewer, as you know, is at the top of the list when it comes to some of the recommendations that the Treasury has said are permitted use for these funds. I spoke with your, the fire marshal regarding the fire hydrants. We're still working on that as well as the natural gas lines. Now, I, I did send my comments up to the National Association for Counties regarding fire hydrants and the, the natural gas lines. I have not heard back from them in terms of whether that would be a permitted use for the American Rescue Act funds, but I'm waiting to hear from them. But I know, and we do, all of us know that sewer and water are at the top of the list, and there are some additional monies from the state that I was not aware of prior to reading the act myself, so hopefully we can get our state senator and representative involved as well to make sure that we get the sewer issue resolved, and then we'll continue to work on the fire hydrants and natural gas. So again, thank you all for coming. I think we're on the right road home, and you all need to continue to be engaged because you are satisfying one of the requirements from Treasury by coming down here to talk about it.
Okay, thank you. And we will be back if necessary.
Keep smiling.
I understand, I understand when you say fight, because at some point, you get tired of asking.
Yeah.
Get tired of asking for your rights, tired of asking for what you deserve, tired of asking for what he wanted in court for you.
Exactly.
You know, and then, so you stop asking, you start fighting for it.
And what we do know about that first sewer project that was done out in Madison Park, the hood, it was done with CDBG money.
That's right.
And hood, there was a complaint filed by one of our constituents, one of your constituents out there, that went up to the OIG's office to, for them to investigate the misuse of those funds. And it was found in their audit report, and I didn't bring it with me today, that Montgomery did misuse the funds after spending $700,000. All of the people were not connected, and the rest of the funds were, and they were supposed to give us a community center, too, and all those funds were diverted somewhere else. Why? Because they said they realized that there wasn't any sewer connection out there. So they diverted the funds from that project, and the project, neither project was completed.
Okay.
Won't happen this time.
No, it won't.
Thank you all again for coming.
That's all the items.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, we got it timed. Is there anybody here from Youth in Action? We had some, some qualifiers for the Junior Olympics in Houston this year, and I think it was nine of them that qualified to participate in track and field, and one of the coaches was supposed to be here this morning. I guess he'll be at the formal session.
Okay. Okay, well, we got 15 of them.
Amazing. He texted me that, and I just thought he would come for 10 o'clock, sign up to speak.
We have about 14 minutes before our formal session starts.